Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October regular board meeting. I hope everyone had a chance to drive across Fruit Ridge this evening. If you haven't, you can on the way home.
He said nice.
It is a lovely experience. There was even somebody biking with his, with like a child seat on the back going around. And I thought, you know, linking those bike trails is a nice thing.
So it was always six?
It, oh, six, was it seven, eight? Either way, it was open. Enjoy the ride home. Um, let's go ahead and open tonight at a moment of silence. Looks like all members are present, along with our student representatives, Erin Holman and Chase Smith, Superintendent Hopkins, and Director of Finance, Alson. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Chase, supported by Alson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Any recognition tonight?
I think Dr. Horner has a couple staff members that she'd like to recognize on board.
Nice.
Hey, happy October, everybody. And so I've had the pleasure of spending some time in the high school, mostly in the office. I've been kind of trekking lightly in the hallways because I feel like as I walk into classrooms, I don't know, I haven't quite separated myself from principal as observation, you know, versus like HR just checking in. So I noticed a lot of great stuff going on in the office area, so I'd like to start by giving some shout outs there. The conference week just finished up for all of us, and one of the really neat things I saw was our counseling staff has been signing up kids and parents, really. It's really not about the kids, it's mostly about the parents for FAFSA. So they had open, I guess you'd say enrollment, and just opened their doors to make sure that any student or parent that needed help would be able just to walk in. And so they were present, so I wanted to make sure that you all knew that they were doing that for them. We have our student services. They are doing, you know, Melissa, you had asked like how to benefit other schools, so I heard this and I knew I had to bring it to your attention. So they're doing like a dress and a suit drive. It's headed by Lauren Kramer. She's the student service secretary. So she came up with an idea to reach out to the staff in the community for dresses, shoes, suits, and donations to help support students who want the proper attire to attend dances. So it's been so successful, so successful that she's actually run out of space. So she is looking for donations for like clothing racks. So I thought that would be great, or the KHEF grant too. I told her to apply for that as well. So I thought that was a great way to like, A, give back to the community and the students, but also two, to support what they're doing over there. So that is Lauren Kramer. Katrina Young, she is working on, I saw her working on personal goal setting, so she meets one-on-one with every senior to check in. She helps with our applications. We have Kaylee and Ashley are also, she works with them, the seniors that don't quite have a path yet. And then Katrina works on the two-year and four-year trade school-bound students. So they all were working on pop-up clinics during their advisory. They had seniors signing up for helping with their FSA ID, filing their FAFSA, their college essay workshops, applying to GRCC and more. So there's a lot of things that they're doing to support the seniors as they start thinking about their next steps and meeting kids where they were at. Randomly, one of the classrooms I did pop in, I thought I recognized him, and he was actually a first grader at Central, and he was telling me how he was applying for FAFSA. And then it's like, yeah, I made an appointment to go see one of the counselors down there. So I thought that was just so, I don't know, it's just cool to see the other end of like when they're first graders. So our counselors have been hard at work. Matt Elliott is someone I normally see on the technology side of things. He has been doing a lot of work supporting our EL students. He was working on, so another connection, Sarah Androsco used to be our Spanish teacher at Central, and now she's working here at the high school. So he has been training her on Read 180, which is a reading incentive program she uses with her students. He said, and I quote, "It may only be six students, but this is exactly what they need, and I'm so excited to do this for them." So it's neat to see Matt work on that level of support and dedication to sometimes an overlooked population of students in this area. So he checks on their progress, on their online progress, and then he constantly meets with them to see if they're falling behind. So I thought that was something that shouldn't go unnoticed. And it's way beyond his job description as well, too. So I thought that was cool. Deputy Bishop, she's our school resource officer. Her office was always full of students, in a good way. So I heard students that wanted to go into law enforcement. I saw kids just looking for connections. She has a large group of kids. They were either eating lunch, they were laughing together. I thought, you know, school resource officers, they don't always have a good reputation in schools, but she's so approachable. She is so funny, and it's amazing to see what she's doing to get kids to trust her. And last but not least, Michelle Marquez, she's just a rock star with the students. She took a lot of time, I saw her, she was working to get to know students in her caseload. She hosts a lunch group once a week for students that come and sit with her in the office to spend time. She goes above and beyond. She was buying clothes for students who are in need. She was helping students learn good hygiene practices. All of the counselors had like a little setup area where they had just about everything that you can think about for good hygiene practices. She chaperones field trips with our MYSI students. And she always, I heard her several times asking, "Is there anything I can do to help you?" And if you've ever heard her voice, it's just like the most sweet melodic voice ever. So I just wanted to give a shout out to your front office staff. They really did an amazing job. Left an impression, but that's good news from the high school.
Yep, all good news. Yep. All right. Correspondents?
No.
Okay. That brings us to board communication. Why don't you start it? Is there a marky or anything?
Uh, let's see. Last week, I went to the eighth grade STEM classroom where they had, let me see, I got not murderers, magnetic levitation. That was really interesting. They have fifty kids in that class, and it was pretty chaotic, but it was like these kids were just enjoying themselves and having a race with their cars, they maybe. It was, it was really fun. It was great to see all those kids together and just cheering each other on, so it was good. I really enjoyed it.
Good. Thank you. Melissa?
Oh, yeah. I went to the KIA SD dinner honoring Ron Kayler for his years of service, and then we got a budget update, which at that time, I don't think they had anything passed yet. So we're still waiting at that point, I'll give you a lot guessing, if I can remember. I don't know, I've been too long lately. And then I volunteered at the concession stand at the football game Friday night. I did stay late to watch the band as well. I heard that their competition got canceled, and all of those seniors were really sad because it was their last time performing the next day. So I stayed to watch, and a lot of people stayed to watch, which doesn't typically happen sometimes at football games. So I was so glad, and they were so appreciative of it, too. A lot of people even stayed out on the field and watched them. So that was really good. And then I spent, I left Wednesday night late and came back yesterday from the MASB School Board Conference, and I know that's on the agenda, so I won't elaborate on that yet, but I have about a, maybe hour, two-hour presentation later on. No, anyways, it'll be quick, just some updates about that. And then also, I wanted to mention that I did talk to the Pathways Principal as well, and we did get some dresses over there before homecoming as well, some of mine, some of Emily's. They didn't really want mine. Wonder if I, but anyways, and so I'm just gonna keep doing that, too. But I do actually have some clothing racks, so they may be able to donate if they can use one. I have to make sure they can use them first because they're broken down and they're kind of long, so I don't know about that, but thank you for that. That's all.
I'm gonna say thanks for going on a long time.
Okay. Melissa? Tracy?
Um, I attended the KIA SD dinner with Melissa and Mr. Hopkins. It was a nice dinner for recognition, Ron Kayler. He's done some pretty remarkable things in his career, so that was nice to be able to be part of that. And, um, Dan Dean's presentation on the budget, it was a lot of good information to know where we were and the things that we still don't know yet, so it was, it was a nice time.
Thank you. I was at that dinner as well. I would just say, man, every time Dan gets up there to give an update, I learn something. And I found myself actually using some of that information, talking to somebody like two or three days later, and I thought, oh, it's great to be able to pull that out of my backside. The only other thing I think I've done is concessions as well, so always fun. I think I made two hundred credits. But, yeah, yeah, who was coming? All right. That brings us to our high school spotlight. Take it away, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. First of all, welcome, and thank you for being here. And I was gonna say, I do appreciate everybody's work at the concession stand. I know that is hard, hot work, and I do appreciate that, that people know that you're in there and I appreciate the work that you do. So thank you for stepping in and allowing the boosters to contribute. I wanted to chat a little bit. I know last meeting you talked about SAT scores and maybe not having the best result there. And although that is important, and that is something we certainly work on and are paying attention to, there are other programming needs that we have, and we do a lot of good things for a lot of students. And so just wanted to highlight some of that, you know, sometimes we measure in different ways. And this is, this is a measurement for us, for our students, to make sure that they're successful as they move on from high school. So I called it On Ramps to Student Success because I was hoping Fruit Ridge would be open now. I ran home, I live near the lake shore, and I came back and I thought I could get off on Fruit Ridge. Still can't get off on Fruit Ridge that way. So John Richard, as you saw, John Richard ran it for MDOT. John Richard and I went to high school together here. He talked a lot about Kennewah Hills. Even on that day, he said, Nate, it's probably gonna be closer to six PM on Monday until it's all open. But it is beautiful to go across, the walkways and bikeways are wonderful. So I think it's worth seven or eight or nine months. Nobody's counting. Now, if anybody's watching and can help me out, Hayes would be nice to have a look. All right, so let's work on that.
They just mowed it hard, Paul.
Yes, they, yes.
Yeah, I was supposed to today.
I don't know what, like, because I was doing that, and then they're like, no, you're not. So, anyway, all right. So some of our programs, some of our On Ramps for Kids are these. You've heard these terms, but Advanced Placement classes, our early middle college, dual enrollment offerings, and then Kent Career Tech Center, the West Michigan Construction Institute, and our new Teacher Academy, that provides some CTE or Career Technical Education pieces, too. So we'll talk about each of those briefly. So just some facts, just so you know, these are some hitter things when people are asking you, hey, how many kids do you send to Tech Center? How many kids are you have involved in your middle college? Some of those kinds of things. So Tech Center, those of you that have been on the board a long time know that our Tech Center is great. They continue to go through some iterations of how they want to best service our community, and we do a nice job of working with them to make sure the right kids are out there. So right this year, at the high school, there's seventy-three students that head to the Tech Center for one of their three sessions. They still run three sessions. That's about nine or ten percent of our total population, about twenty percent of eleventh and twelfth grades. All of those students are eleventh and twelfth grades. A lot of kids head out there. And then I think it's important to make sure that we're representing students of color as well, because I pulled that data to make sure that the students that are having these opportunities in these different programs are also representative of the rest of the population of the high school. And that is about what our students of color are at the high school. So again, we try to measure that, and we'll see that throughout. Middle College, you've heard a lot about that program this year in grades ten through thirteen. I have one hundred and thirty-six students, and that's about seventeen percent of our kids. Eligible kids, that's about twenty-three percent. And then we've made complete gains trying to make sure that those students of color or students that are underrepresented around there, you see that number, is at twenty-four percent. And then AP, we also offer eleven or twelve AP courses now. That's a lot. So to make sure we get kids scheduled into those, we have two hundred and seventeen kids taking at least one AP course. This year, that jumped heavily because we added Earl AP World History and Geography. That's for ninth graders, so I've got two sections of that, so that's increased quite a bit. So again, you can see those numbers there, good representation and good opportunities for our students. And then dual enrollment, dual enrollment, the students that have one class, maybe two classes at GRCC, again, we are blessed. GRCC is one of the best community colleges in the nation. They have a tremendous amount of programming, they have a tremendous amount of classes that allows us some flexibility with our kids. So we try to, if students really want to do that, we allow them to do that in eleventh and twelfth grade as well. So I have eight students right now taking thirteenth, so a couple of those kids take two classes. And then since twenty-one, twenty-two, since I've been tracking this a little more, we've had sixty kids do that. So oftentimes, I put this on there because oftentimes we hear kids aren't taking AP, they're just gonna go dual enroll, and they're not even here. It's not true. Kids want to be at the high school. Kids enjoy their time here, they want to be here full-time, but if they have an opportunity and kids and parents now are more sophisticated, they know about all those other programs, they know about the opportunities that are out there, so they'll ask about dual enrollment. They ask about AP. And so those are some ways we allow that to happen. Couple of new programs that we've gotten a little more involved in this year and have changed. Again, if you listen when you go to the ISB and they talk about the Tech Center, they added WMCI, that's the West Michigan Construction Institute. They added that now within Tech Center. They were independent of them for a couple of years, and now all of the enrollment, all of the grades and everything runs through the KCTC. So that's been helpful because it's much more regional now. Helps with busing, helps with making sure the right kids are there. We have seven students enrolled there. They can get certified in carpentry and electrical, then they also have, they also have to take this core, that's kind of the intro to both of those, and then kids decide where they want to go. And they can do that in eleventh or twelfth, eleven and/or twelfth grade. If you go two years, you can get more certifications, or you can do both. Then they earn credentials in electrical and in carpentry, and then they have job places. So last year at one of the board meetings, I talked about a few of the kids from Pathways that have, that went through WMCI and they're now working in that field as they graduate. And I just talked to one of them the other day, he's still working at that job and loves it. And then Teacher Academy is TA. We've heard about TA before, we've had Teacher Assistance before, we changed that to Teacher Academy. It's not just going and making copies in somebody's room anymore. It's really for students that want to be educated. You know there's a shortage of teachers, you know that's important to us, you know we have to grow them a little more home, and so we want to grow our own and then try to keep them around. And so part of that is our Teacher Academy. So this year, I started that program with nine students that are taught by a teacher here at Cowal, and then in second semester, they will start to go and help in our own K-8 classrooms. And then those teachers will be asked to really lead them and help them and understand what teaching is. If they complete the programming from the state and from the ISB, we will partner with Grand Valley, and those students can get free credits as they complete the program, too. Those are pieces we're trying to, trying to work through as we're, as we're teaching students. For example, in that program, we have, we have an advisory committee, that committee's meeting Thursday morning this week, and then we talk about the opportunities that we have there. Just a little asterisk down there, all of these opportunities that I talked about, besides early middle college, all of our Pathway students have opportunity to be a part of these as well. So if students from Pathways, certainly they go to Tech Center, they've been to WMCI, if they want to dual enroll, we help with that. So we want to make sure that they are a part of all that, so that's not just the high school per se. So those are the programs that we offer. I also did include, I'm sure Mr. Hopkins will include this for you, but just wanted to look at dual enrollment over the years. So I just went back to twenty-one, twenty-two because something happened before that that we don't talk about, but I, that's, those are the trends that you can see that kind of level out. They kind of take the same as my enrollment, it's pretty much representative of what I have. So then we hover over that, if that worked, it didn't work on here, there it is. Sometimes it does, but if you hover over, it gives you the number of students. So you can do that when you look at the, the, so those are there. And again, that's KCTC. I did the same for middle college. It also indicates when middle college starts. So I started my first cohort in twenty-one, twenty-two, and they can see how it grows. So now twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, those are when we have full ten through thirteenth grade cohort. You can see the number of students there, too. And then those students have attempted over five thousand total credit hours and really been successful. So about ninety-four percent of them are successful, right, Jay? They're very successful. So we're very thankful for the work that these students do, and then now we see the fruit of that as they move on. So Mr. O'Dell's son is in his thirteenth year. This week, he's, he's gonna apply at Central Michigan, he's gonna apply at someplace called U of M or something, I think he did that to make Charlie happy. But there are programs that he wants to take advantage of, so he's, he's starting to do that. What's nice is he gets help from our counselors, from Katrina, but also from CC. The counselors at CC are also helping Drake, his son, do those kinds of things. So those are the pieces that, that we get from middle college that not everybody else has access to. So that's middle college, AP enrollment, those are the trends there as well. So we did dip, and then we went, we went back up. We wanted to make some more offerings, so we did that. We had some changes in teachers, we had some other things happen. When I, when we added geography and world history, we see that back, it's gone back up. We have some other offerings that I hope to continue to grow as well. Again, to continue to push kids into places where they can be successful. And whether that's AP or whether that's into the trades, all good, as long as we line those students up with what they want to do and where their skills are. Now, with, with like West Michigan Construction Institute and KCTC, those students, we pull their information from NAVYANS. We use NAVYANS as our educational development planning. You've heard about NAVYANS, you don't need to know much more than that. But when a student says they have an interest in construction, then we pull them, we brought them to an open house at WMCI, and then they were able to sign up through them. So by using NAVYANS, we can find better ways to link in with kids. We had, the Air Force was here a week or two ago. I had a few kids that had shown some interest in military, I pulled them. I've got one of them very interested now in going into the Air Force and those kinds of things. So those are, those are some things I can quickly pull in NAVYANS and then engage with kids. So much more time you have to go to students and pull them, if you know that, maybe you have children of this age, you know? And so we have to be more active in that. So NAVYANS helps with that. These are just some score trends, and when you get this, that click here up in the top gives all of it with much more detail. You can also look over, there's color in there, they tell me, I don't see it, but there are some, you can, you can track it by what the name is up there and see how they kind of jets that up and down. But we're hoping our trend is up. This year, we had more kids than we have in recent years get a three or better on their AP, so we're excited about where AP scores are going. My AP, teachers just went to an AP conference last week, a lot of good information there for them and be able to connect with other colleagues in other districts who all of them do. So those scores are there. Again, if you, when you get this, when you click on click here, it'll pop a spreadsheet that kind of shows a lot of stuff. I didn't want to show you all that. And then finally, you know, we want to celebrate the fact that we have been recognized as the best high school by US News. I put a little blurb in there about what they look for. They, they continue to look for these things here around the score part. So kids taking APs exams, and then proficiency in math and reading and science, and then our graduation rate. So according to them, our graduation rate is ninety percent, ninety-one percent. We're really at ninety-four, ninety-five here at the high school. They use a different measurement, but what we report to the, to the state is usually at ninety-four, ninety-five for me at the high school. It's about ninety-four overall. Pathways has a very high graduation rate, too, that helps our overall rating as well. So that's, that's the things I wanted you to see. Again, just to understand, and you can see the numbers, the amount of students that are enrolled in other programs oftentimes not in this building, okay? So then when we build a schedule, and Dr. Horner talked about Matt Elliott, Matt and I work on the schedule throughout the summer, those are all like onesie-twosie classes, all right? So we have all those APs Matt has to schedule. We have all the West Michigan Careers to KCTC kids. Then we have the middle college happening that, that they run by a different schedule because they're on a college schedule. So we make all that happen, and then very, inevitably, a parent will call and say, why can't my kid get this class second hour? And I'm like, don't even ask. Like, don't, don't even, because it's, it's a lot of work to just get to where we get. And I'm always proud of the amount of time that kids will say to me. I have a junior right now, I have a junior in this school, a young man that had six AP courses, and I, I was able to schedule him to have six AP courses, and he's in student council, and he plays two sports. And when he asked me that last year, I was like, Don, there's no way. I, I don't know how I can do that. Somehow Matt pulled that magic together. Now, certainly there's other folks that get a little tweaky that they didn't get what they wanted, but in order to build that schedule with also reducing some staff and making some tough decisions, that's been very good for our kids. So we appreciate the support that the board gives to allow us to do all of that programming in a relatively small Class A school, but it's, it's exciting and it's good for our kids. And I know for Mr. O'Dell and I, it makes us happy to see when kids are excited. Charlie has numerous stories about kids that come back from Tech Center and just love the program they're in. They, they may have struggled for a couple of years, and they come back and you see it in their face. And then, and then he'll help them with their math and... And then he'll help them with their math and that they have here at the high school. And they're like, why do I need this? I just want to go and do this job over here. And those are the things that we couldn't do if we didn't do that work on the schedule and we didn't have the support to be able to run that, that you guys have allowed us to be able to do. So again, welcome, thanks for being at the high school. We do have an orchestra concert, so Charlie and I may blitz here in a minute. But if you have any questions about any of that, we're here if we need it.
Thank you. Anyone have questions?
I just had a quick.
Yeah.
I think breaking out the percentages, like you did, that was really helpful. I can do it through the color. It would be also interesting to see the male versus female right now.
Sure. I think in the one thing I do, you can see more of that too.
Okay.
If it's not there, I can, I have it, so.
How many is that?
Yeah.
For you, I just think we're together.
We have checked and again, it represents, it's fifty-fifty a lot of times. So, but fair enough, thank you.
One other question I like.
Go, go.
You had talked about, you said students are starting to ask about AP and they're asking about dual enrollment. I know we're doing the thing now, I believe it's in eighth grade, where they start planning their high, basically their high school career. Are we, I just want to make sure, I've heard in the past that sometimes people don't know about things. And I get it, right?
Right.
Always are gonna have somebody say, nobody told me. Are we promoting those things? Are we making parents and families aware during that time? Hey, this thing is gonna be coming, you might not be ready for it now, but here's some time to learn about it?
We do. I speak to the eighth graders in February typically, invite their parents in. And this February I had probably the most people I've ever had at that meeting. And without overwhelming them, you know, especially the new ones, when they come in as ninth graders, they're like, oh no. But I do talk about, you know, we have these AP offerings and then what that means. You know, we take the time that people understand what the advanced placement is, what AP is, or what middle college is. We talk through that a little bit. I try not to overwhelm them, but I help them understand that this is why we do things. And we front load ninth and tenth graders so they can have a lot of opportunities from the eleventh to twelfth grade. We also make a big deal about high schools are time to start over. We don't necessarily care what happens, you know, in the eighth grade, but things change. There's a fresh start for us here and we all kind of start at the same level. The difficulty sometimes, and you alluded to that, is oftentimes kids in eighth grade are choosing some honors things. They're choosing to take Spanish two, or they're, you know, they're already accelerating, if you will. And not everybody's on that same road. So how do we, how do we then, if a student, maybe they mature a little bit later and then all of a sudden they figure it out, you know, math is now makes sense, it's gonna make sense for them. We also have ways to accelerate them within the time they're in high school. So if they do want to get into a counselor, if they do want to get into a AP stats or something like that, we can do that. So you're not just, the path isn't chosen when you're eighth grade. And that's always been something of concern for me because I was eighth grade, I just wanted to play basketball. I didn't know anything else happened after that. And then when I got to be a junior and senior, I was like, wait, if I want to go to college, I have to change my direction. My own kids, my four kids all have a different path. So it's nice to be able to say, no, here's some things I can do. We try. We use social media to promote AP and middle college, you know, they read, they see those things, so that's.
Do we have a touch point with each student every year?
Yes. So I think Dr. Horner was talking about, right now is a good time to meet your seniors, right? So we're hitting seniors heavy right now. We also, we try to touch base with each of them before we start scheduling, which is around spring break. We try to track that.
So, not really a question, just kind of an observation or a comment. I think last time we were covering some standardized test results. You know, and it's how we kind of migrate into that thing. I won't go back to the tape because what was said, I don't recall. But what I, the message I was trying to get to, and I think I was one of the ones that spoke the most, is we spend so much time dissecting standardized tests from like eleventh grade down. What I don't understand is how those transition into the ultimate standardized test, the one that frankly, they all matter, but the one that matters to the individual, right? So I think the comment you started, and all of this is great, you guys do offer a lot of great stuff. Some for those that don't want to go down that path, going to trades or other skills, and some that do because AP and dual enrollment and all that obviously naturally adds to that. So I don't know if there was a comment maybe that we don't have SAT, good SAT scores. The fact that I was trying to get is I don't know, because we always talk about the SAT, the standardized tests before that. So I thought the link between all these standardized tests that we do up to that point and then how our kids do on that test would just be a logical kind of connection.
Sure.
To understand how we do, I don't have enough information to know. If I said that we weren't doing well, it's because, that's my own case, my own son's experience, right?
Right.
Wasn't, I mean, he did fine, but I'm just saying like, that was my own experience, right? So that was kind of the ask was, and please hold me on if you guys have all been through this process before me, is like, it seems like if we're trending good on those early standardized tests, that would transition to a good SAT. We content or process, right? Either the content translates or the process of taking a standardized test, it's both. And if we're not, then that would also seem logical and transition to that. But that's just hypothesis, it hasn't been proven. And so I would personally love to see, whenever we review standardized tests, some kind of data around that SAT. Because while trades and all that stuff is really important and it's really hot, which is kind of interesting since we were so worried about it three years ago, there's still a fair amount of kids, it's not the majority, that that SAT score really matters.
Yes.
Because if you don't perform on it, which again, it's accountability to the student himself or herself, but if you don't perform on it, you eliminate half the colleges. And with the no requirement or not required thing going away in a year or two, that really changes. So that was my point. I did not say, because I don't know, how our SAT scores are.
Yeah, and they could be better, is what I would say. The issue with SAT is it's one time, one day. And so a student could have a bad day and then that's the score we get. Now they can go retake it, but we don't, we don't see that. So what we've tried to do is give kids opportunity to be ready for that test. And you talked about process, it's an online test, you know, so it's all on the computer, that's different. It's, and then also be ready content wise. Issue with SAT is we don't get a lot of feedback from them about how our students do on specific portions. So oftentimes to dissect that takes some time. Charlie and I do that and enjoy that and try to pass that along among everything else. But it is, it is important to make sure that our students are put in the best spot to be able to be successful. And I think we are, I think we have, we have teachers doing good things each and every day with students to make a difference on those tests. And I think we should see better results. And so somehow we gotta figure out what that gap is.
And that was really the feedback, I think for me, with this one person.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see how we compare, you know, about the districts, the same limitation, the same one time, one test.
Yeah.
And see kind of how we measure against like schools, you know, the state.
When did we, you know, the one that they take that you guys get, when is that in comparison to some of the others? I don't like.
Right after.
Is it on the early side?
Yeah, it's great, like a week after. Yeah. And that's when everybody has to take it in the state.
Oh, okay.
So there's a window, but.
But they can take it prior on their own accord.
They can.
Yeah. I know, well, like you said, we were talking about our own kids and whatnot.
Yeah.
I got my first one to take it a second time, the other one didn't want so much to do so.
Yeah.
I would say that's probably why she didn't go to Michigan. But compared to her sister, great, but the, just the idea of once you've taken that test once, you know how it's gonna go again, and so being able to take it again, just is gonna naturally be better. That's kind of what I said to my own children. But you don't get that second test, correct? So you don't even, you know, you don't know if they've taken it before or they take it again after, it's only the one that you have. Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah. You know, research would say if you take it once and then you do some studying, not even much studying, like ten hours a week and then you take it again, three months later, your score will go up by a hundred points. So we do have students that do that and do much better the second time. And I'm like, that's great for you, but.
Right, yeah.
The score I have is, but that's, that's great. We want students to be able to do that, of course. And I think, Corey brings up something that's always interesting to me, kind of knocked on you earlier, but I had eight kids go to U of M, you know, last year, I think. And when I was in other places, I didn't have, and there's other districts that I talk to quite a bit and they're like, you have a lot of kids that achieve at high levels and can get into some of these prestigious places that we talk about. And K College and some of those, you know, newer kids go to those places. So that are more difficult to get in. But they do, not all take an SAT, they just look at what kids take. And then our kids are successful and they get the two. Then I have fifty percent kids that go to CC. And again, CC is a great place. So oftentimes, as you're aware, CC will take students that just passed our state or our Park County. Then what do they do with that, right? We do track that and try and get that data to be better. That college clearing warehouse piece is hard to get in because kids in college don't answer their phones and respond very well. So, but that's something else I've tracked, just to see how our kids that graduated are doing when they're there.
You have no way of tracking their continuation through college, other than if they give you the feedback and stuff. That's, that's one of the things I've heard in the last couple of years is that there's a high rate of, could just be the kids that I know, right? But the high rate of going and lasting the year or two and then dropping off.
Yeah. Anecdotally, we hear that, right? We hear that a lot. There is a, it's called the college clearinghouse that we are a part of. And then they send us information, but they, it's a very small percentage of kids that they get ahold of and they give us numbers based on that. And so that number gets a little bit skewed, but we do, we see kids that come back and, but then they try something else. Or they go into another field. And we hope that, again, we've given them some tools to go out and do that and be successful. So we're always here, that's why I tell them when they graduate, you know, I may mock you a little bit if you come back, but when you come back, we'll help you, you know, that's why I'm here, so.
I would like to give one shout out to, we say that we have eight kids that got into U of M or some of these upper schools. I think our English teachers, just their readiness to help kids with essays and last minute stuff, letters of recommendation. I mean, both of my kids have kind of been there and are later to write that stuff, so excellent help, I think, from our staff.
And last week, we were dating, we did like the NAIA clearance, and she said, your people got back through in an hour.
Yeah. That's something we cleared up, let's just say that. Because it's important and we need to make sure that we have more kids playing sports in college. You know, that's another, another thing we didn't talk about because the clearinghouse for NCAA is another piece that we have to be a part of. Counselors are doing nice jobs, making sure that that works.
And that makes me feel good because I was on the other end where they weren't getting the support.
I didn't say that, yeah.
That's, that's a step in the right direction.
Thanks. Hey, you know, you're welcome anytime, of course. Happy to have you here anytime during the day or, thanks for being at all our stuff.
Orchestra concert.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just doing representative reports. Jay, do you have something for us?
Yes. Mr. Robert's point, my thing, advanced placement, they've always been good. I mean, I took a few throughout offering at middle college and always at the end it's all in the end for me to be able to do the test as best as I could. Also, middle college has been great. They've also given me a lot of opportunities rather, me being in those AP classes and doing honors etcetera has a lot of means to have more open time during the school day, so then I can take more college classes, which is awesome. And then to Dr. Horner's point, also, Mrs. Young and everyone else in there is also very great. Even though I chose not to do middle college all the way through through year thirteen, they haven't treated me any differently, haven't lowered the amount of classes I can take or anything like that. And they've also helped me with my applications and fast forward, so that's been great. This week is our first like date production, we just did a new, so that's good. We've had a lot of things planned for like over a month, so now all of the videos are gonna come out this week, which are, which is been created.
And then who will find us?
They're gonna be on Instagram.
Okay.
Because we're doing riddles now.
What's the Instagram account?
Kendall Hill, all in one. And then also interact as slowly going to the people who are joining, which is good. We are also trying to develop an action plan for the next few years, because we do have a lot of seniors in it, but we have a lot of underclassmen and, like I was talking about the freshman, who we're trying to get in and we're gonna try to get them all in towards the end of the year so that they know exactly what to do next year. And we're also starting to plan for drives etcetera. And then there's also a World Trade Interact Conference, I know there's a kid too, which will allow us to kind of go and see how the other interactives are running their club so that we can make our club, um, and that would be interesting, so going up.
Thanks. Thank you. Aaron, do you have anything else?
Um, going on to what you said about like KCTC and stuff, we, a sophomore just had a tour to the university this year and it was really amazing, the people there were amazing. What I haven't seen a lot of though is of all the other stuff that they have. It's all just KCTC or the RAP classes, and I feel like a lot more students would be involved if they knew that there was other options than just KCTC. But on the bright side too, I still want students to go to KCTC on the tour that you wouldn't think would go. So I feel like that's a good thing, you're getting a lot of engagement from students that I've met enough in middle school and stuff that never really thought about those things. So seeing them actually ask questions and volunteer to go is really nice to see. But other than that, that's all I have.
Ah, thank you. All right, my next.
Audit update, just doesn't sound as cool as the high school spotlight of it, yeah, yeah.
I think it sounds fascinating.
It sounds fascinating, right? Yeah, just wanted to give an update on the audit since we last met two weeks ago. We've made some nice progress, I think. You know, I talked about a couple of the big items that were outstanding. One being catching up on the general fund, getting all the activity posted and reconciled and that has been completed. And then another big task that was not completed was basically reconciling of all the grants that we have for the year and getting all that activity recorded. So lots of activity has been recorded in the last two weeks. Basically getting us, you know, pretty much to current or last fiscal year for purposes of the audit. Plan is to send a new trial balance, actually, this is all like hot off the presses, a new trial balance to the auditors tomorrow and then touch base to see what our outstanding items are at this point. So I think now it'd be a lot of more of what you would consider traditional audit items versus stuff that should have been done, you know, throughout the course of the year. So hopefully have another update here in two weeks and we've made some, some good progress. But I don't know until I send that new trial balance to the auditors, what they're all gonna wanna test. auditors, what they're all going to want to test, um, until this is done. So that is the update. Anyone have any questions on the audit?
Can you remind me what the due date was?
Uh, well, November first would be the original, the original due date. That's always the goal.
And that's not the, um, trial balance, that's the due date?
That's the-
That's completion, right?
That's completion, correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Melissa, would you like to talk about the conference?
Sure. So I went to the conference, uh, Mission Association of School Board Conference. Um, I do appreciate the time that you're giving me to talk about it on the agenda. I really do appreciate it because it is really important. I know, um, some of board members, um, don't have the time or don't find interest in it, but I do, so I appreciate that time. But anyways, I took twelve hours of classes while I was there, went to two general sessions, went to four, four clinic sessions. I went to the delegate assembly, which was three hours long. I went to two networking breakfasts, two networking lunches. I was a host for a clinic session, and I participated in several other networking opportunities. So needless to say, I put a lot of work and a lot of time into these and a lot of, um, I do get a lot of good information. And I'll just go through quickly some of the highlights of my time at the conference. Um, I took, like I said, four CBA classes. I took Leading with Purpose, Advanced Leadership for School Board Members. I took, um, Leadership by Consensus, Confidence and Leadership. I took Focusing on Feedback and Leveraging that Feedback was a separate class. So those were the four classes I took. But the two that I would probably spend the most time on, um, is Leading with Purpose, um, Advanced Leadership for School Board Members. Um, it wasn't, it was a great class. It was, um, taught by Stan Miller, a former Mona Shores Board Member. Um, and it was just about the key learning and how it relates to my role as a school board member on the KHPS school board. So I try and take everything they're teaching in these classes and, and how is this going to work for me as my role on this board. Um, and one of the highlights from that class is that we often talk about the roles of being a school board member. You know, the financial responsibility that we have, the policy setting that we have, the, um, continued support for our superintendent. Um, those are the things. But this class dived deeper into that, and it talked more about the primary work of the board. Not a role, but the work of the board. And that work, um, consisted of creating a shared vision, establishing a structure to achieve the vision, setting high standards for student achievement, developing assessments to measure progress, ensuring accountability for education outcomes, supporting goals through alignment of resources and strategies, and fostering a positive learning environment. Sharing the vision with our stakeholders and promoting continuous improvement through innovation. There was a gentleman that was referenced several times throughout the conference in several different classes. His name is Simon Sinek, um, motivational speaker. Um, you can find his stuff on YouTube. It was, he was used just throughout the conference in all classes I was in pretty much. Um, then we talked about the different, they talked about the different leadership styles when, with, you know, within all of these styles of leadership, we should always be asking ourselves how we can best help and encourage our superintendent. And that was a really, um, important point for me to hear, because I don't feel, especially, and I'm, I'm speaking of myself, nobody else, but I don't feel that I have always done the best, best job at that, and I, I really need to take a look at that. I think I've gotten pretty cynical over the years about some things, and I, I really, I had a kind of an attitude adjustment. So I, it was, it was really helpful for me anyways. Um, the book recommendation they gave was the Leadership Challenge and How to Make Sure Everything's Happening in Organizations, but I can get that information to you. I mean, you don't have to write it down or anything. But, um, and the question they asked us to always focus on in, on is, do I make a difference? It's not, the question is not, I'm sorry, it's not, do I make a difference? The question is, how do I make a positive difference? And then we were encouraged to ask ourselves this question at the end of every day and at the beginning, if we so choose. But, um, and then they also had us pair up with a board member from another district. I chose, um, her name is Jill Weiser from Parchment. In one month, we're going to get together and talk about how that helped us in our own personal lives and how it helped us to be a better school leader, board member. Um, CBA, another CBA class I took that I want to talk about a little bit is Leading by, Leadership by Consensus. This was an extremely important class for me personally to take, because again, I think I've gotten pretty cynical about some of these things. And I, I do remember saying, quote me, but I remember saying that, I don't know if I believe in consensus anymore. Um, it just doesn't seem to work. So that's why this class was just so important for me. It really gave me a, a wake-up call to, when we don't try and come to consensus on our school board, we're doing our superintendent a huge disservice. Um, and that, that's going to stick with me, and, and I, I feel I will, I will definitely do better because of that. It just creates better quality decisions that are more likely to be implemented suc- successfully. Um, there's a stronger team commitment when you collaborate, um, and try and come to consensus. And then we just, they focus highly on the point that we need to give every member a chance to speak, but we also need to listen, even if we don't agree. And I just, I know I can do better at that, and I'm hopeful I will. Um, we talked about how to have a cohesive team. I won't go into all of that, because there's other things I want to touch on a little bit. Um, but the focusing on feedback and the leveraging feedback, that, I, I have all the material here, again, if you want it. Uh, there was some supplemental material that I'll give to Julie and she'll have, if you want to have that as well, um, to some of these classes that gave like, talked about quantitative and qualitative data and mixed measures and all that kind of stuff, but blah, blah, blah. Anyways, so, um, the general sessions were this author, George, I'm not going to say it right for us, that's not right probably, but, um, and he talked about the, um, well, he's a leadership consultant and author. And, um, I have, again, I'm almost done reading this book, and when I'm done, I'll, I'll leave it at the school if you'd be interested in reading that information. You can also go on the MAS B, MAS B website and watch these, um, speeches for yourself if you, if you care to. The other general session was Matt Lay- Laram- Laraman, Managing Director and Co-Founder of Social Prosperity Partners. Talked about the mounting challenges to civic unity, economic uncertainty, and political pressures, and how each of these are making local leadership increasingly challenging. Um, I also attended his breakout session. It was really good, really informative. And he has a podcast, a community catalyst podcast that he actually asked me to be on, so I'm thinking about doing that as well. But, um, the other clinic sessions I took, I won't withdraw them. There's one I really would like to focus on a little bit more than the others. But I'll tell you what they were. Leading from NEC, do you really need to be an officer to make a difference? That was taught by Susan Baskett, um, from Ann Arbor Public School Boards and Deb Makin. And then I took Creating a Team of Eight, Helpful Strategies to Form a Cohesive Superintendent Board Relationship. That was taught by Heidi Katula, Superintendent of East Burn Rapids, and Mike Reed, their Board President. Um, Leading Through Complexity was the one that I took with, I told him, Laraman. But the, the one that was really almost probably the most important session I think I've ever taken, honestly, as a school board member, was Practical Steps for an Effective Board Superintendent Team. And, um, that was Karen Bradford, Alan Burton, Crystal Frank, Liz Jarvis, Mark Johnson, Dave McCarland, and Andrea. Both of us who is the superintendent, and that was all the school board members from Livonia Public Schools. They only have one board member that could not attend because their son was playing football. Um, that was incredible. To watch a school board that high functioning, that, um, they have thirteen, over thirteen thousand two hundred students in Livonia School District, so it's huge. But, um, they were talking mainly about creating a true team of eight. And that is how they have developed and maintained a highly effective board and superintendent relationship. It's extremely difficult for a superintendent to work with a, um, this is coming from a sparrow superintendent, um, school board, uh, like a four-three or a split board. It's, it's very hard for the superintendent to work with, with that. That's why, again, I go back to consensus, changed my mind. It's very important. We need to strive for that. But, um, they always keep a solid list of potential school board members. Um, they actively help candidates win. They commit to being respectful to one another. It's very important to do their onboarding, because they're elected board members before they ever see, sit at the table. Um, they do conduct three board meetings a month. They have a study session, and that meeting, they second last and it would be three to five hours, where they just have every director in the district come in and give their report. So directors in their district, whereas HR, finance, pretty similar to ours, um, with maybe a few extra because of the size of the district. And then they have a committee of the whole meeting, where they just ask any remaining questions that may be left over from the study session, that's a much shorter meeting, and then they have their board meeting, which usually lasts about half an hour to forty minutes, because it's strictly voting. Um, the committee of the whole and the board meeting are televised. Um, they talked about how the strategic plan is the board's responsibility. It's the school's board's responsibility to set the district goals. They talked about this phrase they use a lot, clear as kind. There is no greater gift than clear expectations. Trust and respect. Respect all board members abilities and talents. And words and actions matter. Um, never bypass your superintendent. Never bypass your superintendent. Um, they keep a Google Calendar, the board, I thought this was a fantastic idea, but the board and the superintendent together collectively keep a Google Calendar. So they all know, like, if Jeff were to be able to attend, uh, a music concert, I would be able to see, oh, Jeff is going, maybe I can step back and that, you know, at least there's some representation there if that, if, if that's what we should choose to do. But, um, of course, they have a code of ethics, and they review that code every year. They have three work sessions a year, and they also, or workshops, work sessions, or retreats, you can call them whatever you want. And then they, um, do have social hour twice a month where they get together. They do not talk board business. They do not violate the meetings act. They just have a good time. Um, all eight of them and their families. Um, so I was so motivated and so inspired by this school board. I can't begin to tell you, um, how incredible that was. And I just wanted to share some of those things with you guys, if you're interested in, and try and work on those ourselves. Um, we did get, um, a legislative update, and I'm not, Jerry does an incredible job of giving us that update, so I really don't want to go into too much on that, except for the fact, um, from the federal legislature, that there will be no SNAP benefits as of November first. Um, Head Start in the Upper Peninsula will no longer be. Um, and there will be no WIC, um, as of November first. Um, they will be moving IDEA to Health and Human Services from the Department of Ed. Um, one of the board members has stood up and said that if, uh, family is on Medicare or Medicaid, that they will help with food insecurities, because they will be losing their SNAP and WIC benefits. Um, what else do I have? And again, I, I really appreciate you guys letting me talk about these things. Um, I think that's pretty much all, all I have. Um, I mean, there's more. I could, I could talk about this for hours. But again, I just want it to be known that when you send us on these, when the public supports and send us these conferences, that it's really, really vitally important, um, that you know that it's not wasted. It's not wasted at all. Um, I know that I came out of that conference a better board member. I know I can serve my community better because of it. I know that I can be a better team member and support the superintendent better than I have, for sure, um, recently. So I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to go.
Um, I loved all the, the classes and the conferences as well, but having been as many times as you've seen this excited after going to this fall one, I think a lot of us missed a good one.
Yeah, I think, I think there was a lot of new, new classes and relevant classes at this time. That's why I was so excited.
So good.
They were so relevant. And honestly, they, I'm not, I'm not saying this lightly, it will change the way I, I continue my board service. It will change for sure. Um.
That's the best part of professional development, I think, is often personal development as well.
Oh, it helps, yeah.
Because I, I learned a lot too, going through that stuff. So, yeah, I'm glad to hear you had such a good experience. Anybody else have anything? Oh, I will, um, also point out, I asked Melissa about if anybody went to MAS B's conference last year, and we got that little sheet that listed all the CBAs, and it had them by, you know, Spring Institute, Winter Institute, and all the dates. Melissa does have that, if you want to take, I took a couple pictures, so if anyone's interested in thinking about classes, upcoming classes, she has that.
Is that not online?
Not in that concise of a-
No, that's like broke down.
I mean, like, that tells them what, what classes are offered at Summer Institute, what classes are at Spring. And that way, if there's something that you've been wanting to take, you will know ahead of time. You can mark off on your calendar.
That's what she's talking about, that's what she's talking about.
All right, that brings us to public comments. Is there any public comments? Okay. You've seen that there's none tonight. We will move along to our action items. Can I get a motion, um, in support to approve our consent agenda?
Motion.
Support.
Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Have future meetings listed? Um, no, I think there's anything else to point. Oh, I do have one thing to point out. I have a KI ASB meeting on Wednesday, but I did look at my packet already, and it would appear that the only person that applied for the scholarship to Washington DC this year is, um, Turner, so I hate to be premature in saying this, but, um, I think it's probably a fair shot that, um, get that scholarship.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Yeah, so, good news. And with that, let's do go around, start to trucey then. Um, Shay, I'm sorry. I thought maybe you got up, because I just, you were like right. Anything else? No? Tracy?
Um, I just wanted to ask, I know, um, we got an email from, um, Marshall. I thought he was planning to come and speak to us. Do we have a timeline?
We, we do tentatively have a timeline. He is on vacation right now, and will be returning, uh, I believe he said, November fourth. So he can come to our next, uh, it'll be a committee of the whole meeting, and, and then we can go into closed session at that point.
Is that for both topics or each one?
That is both topics. And I will have something to send out, um, very shortly, um, with the report.
Do we have to have separate closed sessions for each topic?
Technically, I don't.
Because I think the participants might, maybe you and I can talk offline. Thanks.
Yep, sure.
Um, the only thing that I was going to say, that I turned in this scholarship application for an SBA, so, um, after I find out next year or whatnot, and then I guess I will, about getting scheduled for that.
For, for the first week. Hey, exciting. You know? Sure.
Uh, two things. One, uh, thank you, Melissa, for the recap. I appreciate that. I have a connection, actually, two connections to Livonia Public Schools. I have a sister-in-law who is a Spanish teacher there, and her daughter, so my niece, um, is a- I have a sister-in-law who is a Spanish teacher there and her daughter, so my niece, um, is a elementary teacher there as well. So, uh, we'll be seeing each other for Thanksgiving and I'll be sure from a, from a staff member perspective, we're gonna have conversations with her about that, about, um, some of the things we shared, so thank you for sharing that. Uh, if you haven't already heard, we are hosting this Friday for playoffs. Uh, we get a rematch with Coopersville and it'll be a rematch of last year's, uh, first round playoff game. Well, the differences, we get to host this year, so they'll be coming to our house. Uh, we are kicking off at seven thirty. And the thought behind that, that's as late as MHSA would allow us to, to kick off, was that for those that wanted to, um, do some trick-or-treating before attending the contest, it looks like we might be one of the only. Oh, yeah, it's how, it looks like we might be the only one kicking off at seven thirty. Everybody else is going at seven, which is fine. Um, and I've heard, although I've not seen it, you know I'm not active on social media, uh, but I've heard that on social media that, uh, there's, uh, maybe you know, but you're just gonna listen more about this, but there's a, there is a going to be a spot for trick-or-treating, um, at our contest. Yes, there will be a spot. I don't know anything about it, I just have heard that it's on social.
If I get more info, I'll pass it along. I am aware there is a trick-or-treat, it likely will be in the tailgate section, which is right outside.
Okay.
Nice. Yeah. Anything else?
Yeah, heck yeah.
Are you really?
I'm just gonna say, I used to guess, I was like, wait, what?
Really?
I'm already dressing up for work.
Oh, well then, you have a costume.
I'm guessing what I'm, what my costume is. For those that know me, that's my favorite place in the world.
Are you gonna be a barista?
Beautiful costume.
Are you then gonna sit there?
I'm literally gonna go to Starbucks that morning with my costume on.
Do you have an official?
It's not official.
I have an official.
Oh, I know, good job.
She retired.
Oh, my gosh.
After many years of working.
I just ordered something online.
I have a bad time. I'll get it to you.
I thought it was a great idea.
It is, but.
I'm more smoking for where you're getting to Starbucks.
Yeah, maybe the lean.
I know there's a lot, maybe, it's kind of a thing, but, yes. Um, so yeah, so I'll dress up for that. But, um, in addition to your comments about playoffs, just kinda, you may have seen this, but we did win the RCA conference as well, which is really exciting, I think we did, uh, see them, so that was a really cool moment. I think we celebrated it at the Greenville meeting, we kind of officially got this, that was perhaps our school. Um, and that would be, we also have a convention as well. And then I just had some feedback on the hockey co-op. I know we've spent several time talking about it, we didn't have a ton of, as many options as we wanted, so I got some feedback from a parent, which is me, Christian, and I'll just pass that on to Mr. Willock, just about the length, and there's gonna be depending on practice times, challenges, keeping it from the school, and, you know, the worries we had about the youth just since, and it's a lot of this, so, he knows all of that, but it was just feedback that I got after the first practice, and attempted that in good weather, it was still really difficult to get there. It is what it is, I'm just saying, it's not really, it was a lack of effort.